I'm going to bring the, call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM Tuesday, October 10. We will start off the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for public input, we will set a timer for 30 minutes should anyone come in while we're going through our agenda. We will pause the meeting and let them speak should they come after, we would probably let them speak also, but we typically turn it off after 30 minutes. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak? I think I know everybody here. Okay, third on the agenda is the PTO update.
We can probably do that part of our principal recording.
Okay, perfect. All right, number four is the SAU administrative update, Esther Asbell.
That came quick. Sure, just an update on the community connections, those are those open opportunities, just to sit with me and have a conversation. The first one is the two in Exeter. What is it, in the evening, right here at Lincoln Street in the library?
Yes.
Is that right? Yep. At 6:00 o'clock, so that's Thursday, this Thursday, the 12th at 6:00. And then I'm also doing one at the SST campus at 30 Linden Street in the morning at 8:30. So in case families can't come at night, they, somebody can come in the morning or, this is obviously also open to any community members, really anyone. I may not have all the answers if you have questions, but I'm happy to get back to you. So I'm just trying to make myself available and build relationships being new in my position. There's also one coming up in Brentwood, and then I'll start scheduling in the other towns as the year progresses on.
Is the SST one also on the 12th?
It's on the 30th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep, October 30th. An update on budget development, we're definitely working on all of our budgets, our administration was putting those together. We will, as always, bring it to you in November for a first kind of blush and for you to see and think about, and then come back in December, do a budget workshop if need be for, to make sure that everyone's prepared for that public hearing in January and then deliver it in February. So that's kind of the process, we're at the very beginning of that. Remember, the SAU budget has kind of a different timeline with the Joint Board, and so that public hearing will be next Monday evening at 6:00 o'clock. Is that right? I gotta double check, I'm pretty sure it's 6:00.
Yes.
Is that right?
It's 6:00, yes.
6:00. At the Roy Morris Sat Room in Exeter High School, yes.
Right.
So that's, of course, part of everyone's, all the district's budget, so if you're an Exeter and you want to know about that portion of the budget that goes into the Exeter Elementary, that would be the public hearing to go to, is next Monday night at 6:00 o'clock at Exeter High School in the Roy Morris Sat Room. And that's in regards to the SAU budget. Another thing I want to mention was, I did meet with, the co-op board has different committees, and one of the committees they have is a curriculum and philosophy committee. I met with that committee last week and have asked them to help me work to engage the other boards in developing a process for our vision statement work and the Vision Summit. So we'll be talking a little bit about that as we go on, I'm imagining trying to get board input from the representatives. So just kind of giving you a heads up, all the boards will be included, but they were a group that really deals with philosophy, and that's really what our vision is, and so it just gives me more bodies to work with, all the rest of the board. So that's kind of, the beginning of that vision work is happening, again with that Vision Summit for anyone and all, probably in March, that March-April timeline. I do have a resignation for the board, effective the end of this year, but as you know, the contract does have some timelines, so folks need to notify us. So this is, dear Dr. Asbell, please accept this as an acknowledgement of my intent to retire in June 2024. It has been a privilege and a pleasure to work for Lincoln Street School for the past 26 years. Sincerely, Sheila Allen Harris. So I would need a motion to accept that letter of intent to retire from the board, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of intent. Second, any discussion? No, I don't know. Can I have a second?
Oh, second, yep. Beth did second.
Oh, second, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, I'd like to thank on behalf of the board Sheila for 26 years, it's a long time to work in our special education department, so appreciate all the work she's done and all of her time here, and I hope that she has fabulous plans after this year.
She can come back as a parent.
If she wants to be a bus driver, I don't know, maybe. Molly had another board meeting because of the holiday yesterday, so she, I have the financial report, if I can continue on unless there's any questions for me.
I'm good.
The financials, as you got in your packet, the talking points that Molly gave me, they have encumbered all known items and are still working with schools to build encumbrances. No alarming findings, there's small negative balances in some areas, and that's due to either track change or insurance, Primex Insurance came in a little bit differently for property and liability than we anticipated. So those are the two lines you see, they have the parentheses around them. One is instruction, Director of Instruction for track changes, because they both have been working very hard at getting advanced credits and degrees, so since we have one sitting with us, thank you for doing that work. And then the other, property and liability is the other line. All the rest are, have things encumbered as far as we know, but we'll continue to do that as we move through the year. Any questions on that?
I do not.
All right, that's the end of my report.
Were all of the building projects complete last meeting, or there were, there's still some outstanding?
There was still some outstanding. I will look at my notes.
The playground was still outstanding, that still is outstanding, correct?
Yeah, we are.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, they, I guess, I'll use air quotes, they broke ground last week, and all the replacement parts have been completed, the new structure, the new accessible structure has been completed and installed, and they're putting, I think today they finished putting all the fill, which they needed, since they dug out so much, they had to put about four inches of fill, and once that's complete, I think Rusty Lister's hoping about a week's timeframe, they'll be able to get the person who's going to pour on the rubberized surface. So we're hopeful that within the next two weeks, fingers crossed, that Lincoln Street will be complete.
Awesome, nice. And the only other thing from the minutes I see was the door alarm installations, and I can't remember what those were scheduled for, but have those been done when they left open?
On like the gym doors and stuff?
The gym doors were done, this was for the, all the other doors.
We haven't been here. Like, we haven't had school, Feldman's been here, but I don't know.
Okay, all right, I'll double check.
They were working on ours today, yeah.
Okay, I think there was, these weeks, they were working on trying to get all that done.
Okay, thank you.
And the rest of the projects were done?
Excellent, all right, on to the finances done, approval of meeting minutes for September 12th, 2023. Has everyone had a chance to review them? Do you have any changes? I did not see anything?
I didn't.
Okay, could I, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as is for September 12th, 2023?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I have, Patrick, I need to abstain.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, abstentions.
Patrick, half of it. All right, sorry. Now we are on to principal reports, Ryan McCloskey, Principal, Lincoln Street School.
So the, the building update for Lincoln Street School, just this past Friday, we had our first in-service day since the school year started. During the in-service day, all staff received training, an implicit bias training, that really just shows our continued commitment to the work in DEIJ. The training was originally scheduled for last winter, but had to be rescheduled due to inclement weather, so we had that at the high school. Staff from all the different SAU schools that comprise SAU 16 were in attendance. And then beyond that, when we returned to the building, staff met and reviewed fall data from iReady, we looked at it from the grade level as well as the building level, and we are currently already in our second week of math win and reading intervention. Staff also spent time planning for fall student-led conferences, which we'll be hosting on November 7th, and our celebrations of learning, which happen at each grade level throughout, you know, more towards like the winter and spring timeframe. iReady math coaching, Lincoln Street School teachers began their first of two rounds of iReady math coaching this year, that started today and will continue throughout the rest of this week. Our teachers have learned the math-ready program already, because it's been implemented for a few years now, so that kind of allows the focus of what we're intending to do this year to shift from learning the program to some deeper strategies, and some of those look fours or areas of focus will be support of productive struggle, pose purposeful questions to support differentiation, and facilitate meaningful mathematical discourse. Those were the areas of focus that they reviewed today and will continue to. Maria Nice, who we've been consulting with for Science of Reading, has already started, she's been working with some of our new staff, new to the building, to kind of catch them up or, or help bring them up to a level where they can work with the rest of the staff as she works through the different waves of third, fourth, and fifth grade. And our paraeducators participated in social-emotional learning training with UNH staff and Chris Clifford at Lincoln Street School. Upcoming work for special educators will be around executive functioning. In the classroom, we had our open house on September 26th, we staggered our start time with Main Street, so families with students in both schools would be able to participate. Students and families met with classroom teachers, and then we kind of had a little bit of like a passport for learning or scavenger hunt around the building, where they were able to meet with either Unified Arts teachers, case managers, and other adults that are part of their school day. We also had our picture day last week, and I just want to say thank you both to our PTO, who arranged for some volunteers, as well as our parent volunteers that helped to kind of make the day run smoothly. It's tough to get 420 students through in about two hours, and we did it. We are finishing up our square one art projects for the fall, and again, we were able to utilize a number of parent volunteers as well, so again, just a big thank you for those who were able to assist with the project. And then our special educate, special education department is again sponsoring Northeast Passage in recess, and they're working at both buildings, but specifically with grades three and four at Lincoln Street. And the focus of the work is to support social skills and positive peer interactions, and they'll be here twice a week moving forward. And sometimes it'll be more where they come with an activity planned, other times we'll say, hey, we've got a hotspot, like, for example, I don't know, like the Gaga pit, maybe we could have somebody over there. And so we utilize them in different ways based on need, and also just kind of based on the skills that we're hoping to promote. Just quickly, math win, and just making sure that I don't get too acronym crazy, math win standing for what I need, and our literacy or reading intervention are both underway at Lincoln Street. So those are 30-minute blocks each day, where children rotate sometimes to another teacher in their grade level to engage in math activities that are targeting skills where they're at, that might be right where they're at, you know, where they're expected to be at, it might be some extended learning, it might be some intervention to help fill some gaps. And after each cycle, teachers will meet and review student progress and data and make adjustments to groups as needed. We use our iReady data for this, as well as Akadience, and Akadience is also our progress monitoring that we use throughout each cycle. So we have multiple data points that we look at there. We have a couple of field trips coming up next week, we have grade three going to DeMarit Farm in Lee, New Hampshire. Students will engage in classroom activities to learn about the process of planting, growing, and harvesting crops, they'll learn about raising animals, and most importantly, they'll have a chance to choose a pumpkin. So that'll be coming up, and this correlates with the life cycles and fates of traits Mystery Science Unit. Fourth grade students will be traveling to Sandy Point to explore how the colonists lived off the land when settling in New Hampshire compared to the Abenaki tribe, and this relates to the Native American and colonial times unit. So those two field trips are next week, and fourth grade's on a couple of different days, so within the next couple of weeks. After school enrichment, we're having our, our fall session is underway right now, we have Take Apart Club, origami board games, friendship bracelets, fall crafts, diamond art, cribbage, comic book making, and robotics. Our cross-country season is going to be wrapping up this week's too, where they have tomorrow afternoon their challengers meet at Stratum Hill Park, so the kids are excited for that. PTO deserves a lot of recognition, but I do want to just say that we had a wonderful, we'll call it like an inaugural movie night in the park this past Thursday. They brought in, I think it was called Fun Flix, but they just blew up a, a nice big screen, they had free popcorn and water provided to any families who came, it was the Super, Super Mario Brothers movie that was shown, and seemed to, all ages seemed to really enjoy it, and again, it was, it was a really nice event, and the PTO is working hard to just make sure that it's not always about fundraising, 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 that we can just show up and have a nice event with no strings attached, and I think they didn't, pulled off a great idea there. There was talk about it last year, but just kind of putting it all together, it was, it was really nice. And then just again, a thank you to the PTO, they always provide each fall reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses for staff, and we appreciate that continued generosity as they reimburse teachers through the first month or two of the school year. I am almost done. For the 23-24 school year, I just wanted to share with the board that we've combined our efforts in SEL, Restorative Justice, and DEIJ, and we've, we tried to just kind of rebrand it a little bit, so we've came up with the LSS hashtag You Belong team, we figured there was already swag in the district, so it was like free promotion. But our initial goals were really to help staff see that these aren't like three different things in three different lanes and three different initiatives where you have to choose one, or we really wanted to see is kind of just, they're all kind of running parallel to each other and part of more of a unified effort. So we've dedicated some time this fall in the following areas that we wanted to say were tights for Lincoln Street School, so kind of like our guarantee that all students will be able to, wherever, whatever learning space they're in, there's going to be classroom agreements, and we even came up with some universal agreements, like we are collaborators, we are resilient, we are empathetic, which align right with our CARES work. So we have universal and classroom agreements throughout all of our learning spaces. We have SEL corners or calming stations in each classroom as well, and again, that is in a larger effort to make sure that we keep our students in tier one, you know, not needing to take breaks and missing instruction by leaving the classroom. And then we're doing continued work around restorative questions and really trying to focus on common language, so no matter what may happen or what adult a student may be interacting with, they can expect the type of language and the type of questions that we're going to ask. And then as the school year moves forward, we're going to provide some professional development around the dynamics of difference and othering, and how these conversations, right now, we're going to build capacity within the staff, but ultimately, how these conversations we can have with third, fourth, and fifth grade students. And so that is the conclusion of my report. The one thing I didn't put on here, but I just want to add, is that we have two site visits coming up over the next month. The state will be visiting to conduct a facilities review in late October, we've done all the background and prep work for that, it's just a matter of them coming and looking through our facility, we've worked specifically with Rusty Lister to make sure that we have everything that we need to in place. And then the state also offered a recommended but optional security assessment for the building, and so we're also going to do that as well, and again, I've worked with Rusty Lister and Rich Kane, just to make sure that we have all that prep done. So I think by the next time we meet, those two visits will be completed. Thank you.
Right, just a quick question. First of all, that's, that was all very impressive, all the stuff there, and I second the shout out to the PTO. I just was curious what you found when you went through the iReady data, was, I mean, is this, maybe this isn't the time for, to answer that question, but were there any sort of like headlines of just starting out the year when you looked at the?
Yeah, I mean, I, one of the things that we, that we did, we also talked briefly, not in depth, but we, we talked briefly similar to the presentation that we had in September about the spring data, and just kind of look, looking at some of those hypotheses around, you know, impacts from the pandemic. And so we talked a little bit about the gaps, and we talked a little bit about the learning profiles of the students that we have coming up. But then when we looked at the fall data, I would say, I mean, certainly not a mirror image, but similar to last fall, as far as where we're starting with the number of students that we see in the yellow, the number of students that we see in the red. You know, we also know that, you know, as far as licking out our, you know, phonological awareness data, that iReady's not a great tool for that, for that basic value, so, so we're also making sure that staff know, you know, where to put the emphasis about the data that we're, that we're getting back right now. But nothing, nothing too crazy, but consistent with, I'd say, the, the main message of, from September.
So I don't think Heather, Heather wasn't here in September at the September meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I saw your, yeah.
Yeah, they went, there's, but that may be something, I don't know if, if there's a way to do that online, because the presentation was really good, they went through a lot, and then we also asked a lot of questions, and there's a lot of back and forth.
I can share that with you, Heather.
So it didn't end up in the minutes, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I saw your note about following a class, but I wasn't sure what.
Oh, no, but that was just one part, but they did a whole presentation, both, both schools did a presentation, went through all the data.
Yeah, so I can share the presentation and our, our talking notes or our talking points with you, so you'll have both pieces.
Yep.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Tanya Neve, Principal of Main Street School.
All right, Ryan did a great job, so I won't be repetitive, because a lot of things that were going on there are similar things that are happening at Main Street School. I will say, I attended an iReady training this morning that was looking at data, and they did, there was an interesting slide that I saved that was talking about national norms, they were talking about pre-pandemic, and then during COVID, and now like where we are, and they were looking at about 11 million students, and, and just talking about them, trying to figure out where we're placed. And there definitely has been an increase almost to pre-pandemic on just like early baseline data, and so they were just talking about how promising that is, that kids are really, there still is like a little bit to close, but when you're looking at it overall, it's really promising data, and I just thought it was kind of cool to see it on such a large scale and not just like in our own isolated thing, so that just happened this morning, if you'd be curious to see those slides, I have some of that information too. So some stuff for PTO, we had a really good start to the year, they did their welcome signs again, which families love, they're nice photo opportunities out there. We've, the reimbursement was awesome, they bumped it up a little bit for our certified staff, which they were very grateful for, just with the cost of living and things being more pricey. They sent a lot of volunteers for square one art, also for picture day, which picture day is like my, one of my favorite days, I love seeing kids come in all dressed up, it's like the first day of school and picture day, Deanna and I were talking about it before, although I had lots of giggles because a lot of kids were like business up top, and then like some, what else, everywhere else going on down underneath, and it was so funny that, that you, they looked like they had worked out some agreements with parents on conceding for picture day outfits, but it was super fun. We also had a really good turnout for open house, our building was full, it was awesome to see everyone, the kids seemed to be really excited to be their tour guides and take them around, and they kind of had a scavenger hunt type of their learning spaces, so kids seemed to be into that. Our PTO and our green team, they were working together to give us compostable bags for the classroom. Last year, they gave us these composting bins, but they were kind of getting gross and funky and stuff, and so they gave us these bags to make it a classroom job, and so we're trying to pick back up on our composting. So the green team, they're, they're just, they're super supportive and relentless in their efforts, which is awesome, but they're always finding a way to make sure that we can make these things happen. We also completed vision screenings for all of our students, that's thanks to the Exeter Lions Club. We went to the Exeter Children's Fund, we also received some funds from them so that we can get jackets and other winter items for our students. We've been working on our academic baseline assessments as well, we have been running our collaborative teams, which is each grade level split into two teams, just because our teams are so big to have eight or nine people, so we have half of a grade level on them. We've been working on math and doing like what are our priority standards, and how do we run some vertical alignment from a preschool through fifth grade system to make sure that at no place there's any large gaps, that we all kind of take our turn prioritizing certain standards as like guarantees that when a student leaves kindergarten or first grade, that these are the skills we expect them to have minimally, and that we're going to do everything we can to make sure that kids spiral through and acquire those foundational skills. We've ran professional development for reading and for math, we also have a similar iReady math training coming up, also on UDL, or Universally Designed Learning, and implicit bias, restorative justice, and we, Ryan and I have been attending a progress monitoring tool for English language learners, and so we think that's going to be really helpful in us making sure that our students are making adequate progress, and making sure that we support them along the way. We've been partnering with Northeast Passage, working on the cooperative games at recess, that's targeted for our first and second grade. Want to say thanks to the green team, also, they did a Halloween costume exchange, there were free costumes out, they did a really nice job setting them up and just talking about recycling the costumes, because it's like a one and done, and so why not use them, and they did a really nice job displaying them and labeling them, and families were grateful. I think the only other thing that I want to mention before we get to, we brought Carla Petty here, her and Julie have been working on a literacy review and running a committee because, well, she'll explain it in more detail, but our current literacy program is becoming obsolete, and so we've been looking at what our replacement's going to be. But I also wanted to welcome up Sawyer Kamlin, if you don't know him, he's an Exeter High School student and an Eagle Scout who ran a super cool project that connected both Main Street School and Lincoln Street School, and we're very grateful for his hard work and ingenuity, so I just will bring him up for a second if he wants to explain what his project was.
Good evening. So around last May, I was introduced this project by some faculty members and some community members, and it was really the idea of how can we create a outdoor learning environment for the students. So we started brainstorming, and you know, thanks to the PTO, and Exeter Lumber, you know, we partnered with them to kind of create this, we put it in around two weeks ago, it still needs a little bit more work, but it's almost done. I know we have a story up there right now, but you know, without, without our community members, without Exeter High School students, we had around four clubs of volunteers, like we had 30, 30 students in total to put it all together, it was, it was truly amazing. You know, we, I, I planned around two, two days for this, eight hours a day, to install the, to dig the holes, install them, we did around like five or six hours, which I was truly shocked, we had, we had a lot, a lot of volunteers, everyone was very, very excited to get this in, and for the students, it was, you know, I, I kind of envisioned it in the beginning of what it was going to be like, and you know, it passed my expectations a lot, it was, it's a really cool project, and I, I enjoy how it's part of the community now, and hopefully we can build upon it, you know, I know we were talking about adding more benches and just keep evolving this project of this outdoor learning experience. Yeah, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd love to answer it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So what brought this idea to our elementary schools, because you're clearly in high school?
Yes, so I am a Boy Scout, so part of my Eagle Scout project, you have to do a community service event. So there's not really any requirements to it, it's, you have to show leadership and ask the better of your community. So I was approached about this project by some community members that wanted to, to build it, and you know, I kind of took it, we, we worked it together, we evolved it, and we made it from that, but I'm also was, went to this school as well, so it was a nice thing that I truly give back to the community that I grew up in.
We truly appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the only other things I'll add is that we do have kindergarten, who's going to the fire station this week for their first field trip, a walking field trip, and we have also started our after-school enrichment programs for first and second grade as well. That's it, if you have any questions for me. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then I'll pull Carla up, if you guys want to hear a little bit about the literacy committee and all the work that they've been doing for that.
Sure.
This is scary at home for this to, oh, here it comes. Do we need to adjust lighting at all? Can you do partial? All right. All right. Okay, good evening, I will try to keep this clear, can everybody hear me okay? All right. So as Tanya mentioned, our current Journeys program that we've had in place in the schools since 2016 is going out of print in the 24-25 school year. So we had a committee similar to the one that we have now back in 2014-15, and I was a part of that as well, so doing this work feels like we, we just did this, but it's also very exciting to be doing this again. We talked at our first meeting about the fact that we are coming from a completely different place in this round. Our work with Maria Nice over the last three years, our work around DEIJ. Our work with Miriam Nice over the last three years, our work around DEIJ, you'll see as we bring, I bring in a few pieces, really brings us to a very different starting place and a, and a much more common place across both schools, so we're, we're excited to have a chance to do this again at this time. So just to give you a sense of timeline, last spring is when we announced it in both schools, that this work would be underway. We did have, we asked for volunteers, and we actually did ask them to fill in something of an application. We, we, the dates were, it's every other week for an hour and a half after school, which is quite a big ask of our staff members, so we made it very clear what that commitment was, asking that they could make that kind of level of commitment, and shared, to just share why this work was important to them, and we were pleased and not surprised that we had plenty of volunteers to bring a nice cross-section of representation to this group. With that set and team members in place, which does involve ADP, Main Street School, Lincoln Street School, classroom teachers, special education, paraprofessionals, administration, so really good perspectives involved. Julie and I sat down this summer, and we did a preliminary review using ed reports, as well as a number of discussions we'd had with other area curriculum leaders, and brought forward seven programs to the committee to really discuss and examine. Remaining open to if people on that large committee had heard of other programs or had other resources, certainly we were willing to hear that out and see what they may bring, but we really are, have stuck to that original seven that we found at this time, and we were able to get sample kits and materials in so that they have things to look through, not just online links to, to companies. So we have been underway, we've already had our first two meetings, we sort of went through what the, the mission of this group was. This past spring, the Reading League has created a, a evaluation tool, which gives you very specific information that aligns perfectly, really, with the work we've been doing in literacy, of what to look for, both from a positive perspective, and also any red flags that they may feel we may want to watch for as part of our review, and that tool be used, is being used both to narrow the, the number of programs that we're going to look at more closely, and be used in making that final selection. We're also considering our work around DEIJ, so we have a form that we've been using in much of our work, looking at the seven forms of bias, and so that's also a part of this process as well, and of course, it'd be wonderful if we could find all of those things, and something that aligned well to our social studies and science content, so keeping all of that in mind. We have a timeline that we have proposed, that we are working really hard to maintain, to make a, a strong decision, and take a real thorough look, but also make sure that we move forward with this in a timely fashion. So, we have, I, we're trying to work down to three or four finalists in terms of programs through those tools. We have some vendor presentations that we, we have one already set, a couple of others in progress, and then we're going to meet with the committee again on October 25th to help that, to help us narrow this down further and get that last presentation in place. Vendors are being given about an hour to present, with a half an hour for questions and time to further examine materials with a representative present. Once we get that down to two by January, we would like to have our members participate in a pilot, in which two teachers from every grade level will engage in the six-week pilot, teaching each program for three weeks, so that everybody can compare each program within that pilot. Good discussion around how to make sure that we look at which pieces are used, to be sure the same skills and strategies that would have been taught if using the Journeys program are aligned, so it's no interruption to, to the learning, because this is a tool, not our curriculum itself, so we'll make sure that we don't have any gaps in the curriculum while we implement this tool and examine it closely. We hope to make a final decision in April, and in, in best-case scenario, we would love to be able to use May to do an initial training for our staff, to give them time to see what this shift looks like, what these changes may look like, and have all the time they'd want to be prepared for the fall. With that, we wanted to make sure you were aware, given it is budget season, anytime, especially when it comes to literacy, having been through math adoption as well, there is quite a consideration to the budget in this first year of implementation. We did receive some initial quotes from many of these vendors, and feel that $115,000 per school is a safe number to work with in terms of budgeting, based on what we got. We did have some various numbers come in, but we reviewed all of those and cross-checked and felt that that was, that was an amount we could put forward. We wanted to be clear, that would, that would be going forward K through five, potentially preschool included, depending on the program, and, but that would only be in that first year. When you buy an elementary literacy program, there are many small books included in a program like that, that makes that upfront cost feel quite large, but we would anticipate it would drop back down to a more typical amount after that first year. And I think, finally, just a special thanks to all those people who did step up and offered to be part of this committee, as you can see, as I said, it's a good cross-section representative from many different levels and different areas, giving their perspective on this work. Any questions for me? Yes?
I'm not sure if I missed it, are these programs modular or customizable, or are you just trying to pick between the different ones and closely align it with the work we're getting?
So, the, so our competencies remain our competencies, and we're looking for the best tool that helps us to meet those competencies and has some of those other considerations in mind. With the work we've done around, so it would be one program, I don't know if that part was, we wouldn't piece like different modules from different companies, we'd find the publisher, the program that met the most of the areas that we're looking for, and then have that run all consistently through the district. Am I answering your question?
Yeah, I did, I did understand that it was one company you would choose, I just didn't know if there were any companies that were willing to customize it based on our needs.
Not that I'm aware of, but most, all of the programs that we are examining would have all of the same core competencies that we're looking at, so we, I don't, I don't think we'd ask them to adjust that. Other questions?
Can you just explain what the Reading League is?
Sure, it's a nationally recognized, sort of, if you look at math, there's NCTM, this, it's a group of experts in the area of literacy, so we do look to them for guidance on, on how to select materials or resources for training.
And then, that's great, and then, and then just, because you mentioned it, and then you boil this, I mean, can you explain a little bit, so you mentioned this is a tool, not the curriculum, sort of how you think of those.
Sure. So, and that's often, there's often confusion around that, right? So our curriculum, our competency maps that are developed locally, based on, on state information and local decisions, work that we're doing with Jill Lysier today, this afternoon, as a matter of fact, that is the what we want our students to know, right? The tools that we bring in help us to get to what we want our students to know. In an ideal situation, we would find something that met every single piece of what we want them to know, and, and we look for one that's most closely aligned to that, and then our expertise comes in to, as you said, a little bit of what you were asking, we always look to take what that, that tool has, and then we customize our instruction pulling from that resource to meet the needs of the students in front of us, and that's always the case. What we want is the strongest common tool in place for that tier-one instruction, and then if there are places we need to adjust, supplement, we do, but the, the goal is to be able to, especially in a district this size, to not have too much variation off of that core resource, so that we're speaking a common language, especially when we share students. You heard earlier about when they're traveling to different spaces, we want them to have a, a common tier-one experience. Does that help explain that better?
Yeah, it's really helpful. And then just from on a budget perspective, say, we had Journeys since 2016, typically, like if this were not, if Journeys wasn't cycling out.
Sure.
How often, like when would you have, or do you evaluate Journeys every year? Like how, what is the sort of math, the sort of normal cadence of looking at a, a tool like that?
Sure, the, I have typically in the past heard 10 years is a common timeframe for curriculum, tools and materials to be reviewed, but it really comes down to your school's needs at that time, your system's needs at that time. Certainly copyrights come into effect, adjustments, new learning, we realize, you know, so there isn't a set timeline for that, but it would have been soon either way, especially, you know, again, like I said, you know, there's just different areas of focus for these companies, and we want to make sure we're always looking and reviewing and making sure we're up to date, so.
This might be for Exter, but do our, all of our districts use the same literacy programs, or does everybody use something different?
Not our elementary schools.
Is it inspiring at the same time?
We all use the same math program, K through eight, but not the same literacy.
Does that benefit our districts at all by using the same math program?
I believe yes.
Jill Lysier, in her first year, has made it a point to be a part of this work, so she is aware of this as she's connecting with the rest of us. So many of their, the districts are, are asking questions, and we're in communication with them, we, we cross-talk, but choosing, again, we have the same competencies that we're all working towards, we all have the same end goal in mind, so when we discuss best way to meet student needs, you know, what works for Exeter School District may not be the same need in new fields, where there's perhaps one, maybe two classes per grade level, so sometimes it's really up to what best meets the needs of that school to meet that common curriculum and expectation for students.
In the pilot phase, will, I guess, how, other than obviously the educator's experience of using the tool, how else are you, are students giving feedback? I mean, it's sort of a short window, but I'm just curious, what are the, what are the ways that you would evaluate whether the tool is effective?
It's a wonderful question, and one that's on the agenda for our October 25th meeting, exactly what data will we collect as we go to make that, yeah, so it's an excellent question. Right, it is a short window, so we do want to make sure that we have a way to, you know, look at that objectively as we make the decision.
Um, actually, just a couple, like, quick little things. I imagine if you asked Drew, he would love for all of the students from all the schools to have a more common learning experience, because it is helpful, like for them to anticipate what students' needs are going to be when they come, because they, even though they're all headed towards the same end goal, they have a different scope and sequence, and a different focus and timeline for learning, and, and there's been so much brain research on literacy and reading, that some of the things we were using previously are now outdated, and so I think that's why some of the other school administrators, like, what are you guys looking at? Can you tell, can you invite us to the committee, because we're all kind of in that place right now, because there's been a lot, like a huge boom in brain research in literacy, and so that's like driving part of the need for that. So I just, I just want to throw that out, I bet Drew would love for it to be something more helpful.
Well, and that's why last year, the board, at the end of the year, did we, you approved the extra expenditure of professional development for OG, because that is, that was across district common in all of our elementaries, so there are things as we learn that we tried to prioritize and work through, starting to get some commonalities, it may not be programmed, but there are other pieces that are common.
And I'll share, also, I sit on the Southeasters Curriculum Instruction Assessment Group, and this was the exact topic and is the number one agenda, which was very refreshing as an elementary person, because those tend to be very secondary-heavy discussions. The elementary people in the room took over the meeting last week, so this conversation is coming up in many settings, and will benefit the work, because so many experts in the field are talking about it at the same time. So that's all southeast of New Hampshire, school districts having that conversation. Any other questions?
Thank you so much, Rob.
You're welcome, thank you, and Julie would have loved to have been here, she actually put this together for you this evening, but is not feeling well, so. We're, yes, we try to be, thank you. Great.
Tony, can we get some lights? Thank you. Are you good?
Can I ask a principal's question before we leave that section? So, one is to make a comment about the PTO, my understanding is that they're now meeting on a bimonthly basis, so they, they're trying to meet the first Tuesday, I think is what it is of the month, ideally.
I think so, there's a couple that got flip-flopped, because they realized they had booked them like the same night as our board meeting.
Right.
So there's some that are a little bit off, so we're going to send an update of the new dates.
But they're.
They're bimonthly.
But they're trying to meet every two months now, instead of every month, to try to congregate, I guess, the participation.
And they're doing it in-person, you can attend by Zoom, but they, they met in our library, and they're gonna, they're trying to, you know, get, bring people back together. My last thing.
I had a question I forgot to ask earlier, but Sixty-Eight Hours of Hunger, is that group still involved and active? Because we just haven't heard any update about them in a long time.
There's not a new flyer last week.
No, I just, yeah, I'm sorry, I just met with her last week, and their new flyer went out.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, it seems like a helpful group to have. That was it? Thanks.
All right, moving on to number nine, committee reports. I think DEIJ, the meeting is this week, and you folks weren't able to, who's not able to attend, you both? Where, where is it, and what time?
It's at 3:15, and is it Lincoln Street Library or Main Street?
I have that, I'm going to save it in the back.
Yeah, I think it's Main Street.
What, what day?
Tomorrow.
It's at Main Street School Library tomorrow.
Main Street tomorrow.
3:15? I will let you know, I could possibly attend, but I'm not 100%.
I have a conflict, I couldn't go.
Yeah.
If you can't, let me know, I can see if I can.
Okay.
Get out of something to go.
And Susan and Beth both touched base with me, and I think we'll, I can get them the information, and.
Okay.
I'm sure it'll be, it'll be just fine.
Okay, thanks, Abby.
What's the last cross-country meeting?
Oh, never mind.
I mean, you're welcome to come, of course.
That's where we'll all be.
Yeah, related to.
Everyone's in cross-country?
No, Phil Focke.
I'm in two places at once, so.
So related to DEIJ also, is, it's, it's more at the SAU level, but there's, just talking about how at the in-service day, there's the implicit bias training that had been carried over, that the board is also participating in the same training, that's going to be happening a week from Monday. So there's that nice sort of connection between the two, and I think the timing works out really well, in terms of the staff is just talking about the same issues that the boards are going to be talking about.
That brings me to a question I had about that, who ran that training? Was it a company outside of our SAU, or is it our internal?
Nope. Andres and I facilitated all of the co-op, about 400 in one room, Tanya and Ryan, right, you facilitated, and then there was a third room with Renee and.
Renee was with us, it was us, we had our two schools, East and Center.
Chris, Chris Andruski and.
Andruski, they were.
Oh, great. Yeah, so it was building level leaders and SAU level leaders, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds great. I heard it was great, feedback that I heard. All right, moving on to policy, do we have any updates?
Yes. So for policy, there's, there's a policy that we have to review on an annual basis, it's the investments policy, so the policy committee reviewed it, didn't recommend any changes to it, but we have to vote every year to approve it. So that's the first one that's in there, it's just called investments, the code is DFA. So I guess I would start with that, does anyone have any questions about that policy? Again, it hasn't changed, it's, has the same standards, some of these are sort of best practices and whatnot, and some are fiduciary requirements.
So this is a standard policy that every year needs to be approved?
That's right.
And there's been no changes?
There was no changes from, from last year, I think we changed it several years ago, and made some tweaks to it, but there hasn't been any changes from last year's policy.
Okay, so you need a motion to approve?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve policy DFA, is that investments?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye. And then the other, the other one is a, so in doing the policies previously, excuse me, that's not very articulate, so last year, we went through a number of different policies, including a policy on workplace safety, then, that, and, and some other policies that we started to look at, really got combined together. Then, that, and some other policies that we started to look at really got combined together. So there are updates in Title IX, there are updates in a variety of different policies. And essentially, we took sections from existing policies and sort of regrouped some of that language in other policies. And so in doing an audit over the summer, Heather realized, and the committee sort of checked her work, so to speak, that there were a number of policies that could be withdrawn and should be withdrawn so that they're not, it's not confusing to folks where it has the same or similar language in two different sections. So there's seven policies that the committee is recommending should be withdrawn. And that's, I can go through them, but it's a, there's two related to computer use. It's EGA and EGAB. One is called Responsible Computer Network and Internet Use. The other one's Wireless Internet Access. And then there's a couple related to, there's one related to equal opportunity, GBA and GBAA, which is a reporting form for bullying and harassment. And then there's procedural safeguards for students with disabilities and special ed evaluation procedures, which are two different policies, IHBAR and IHBAR. And then there's one about technology integration. So it gets a little complicated, but these were all, there, there's a list. I don't know if you can see in the packet of where they're embedded. And it's sort of a chart that's laid out. But they're either replaced or embedded in other policies or slightly updated. But it's not some, it's not a matter of like, that we're trying to get rid of this content area of policy. Does that make sense? So.
All of those other policies have to change to absorb?
Those seven policies already have the language that sort of protects those rights or covers those areas in a variety of other policies that we went through last year and approved.
Okay.
So what happened is we approved all these new policies or updates to policies, but until they were all approved, we didn't want to remove the old policies. But now, in going back and doing an audit, we realized all these are already approved. We already have them in our district policy manual and we can remove the old ones that are redundant or outdated.
Okay.
So I can make the motion.
Sure.
I make a motion to withdraw seven policies. And they're all listed in the packet, but I'll say them quickly. They have the codes EGA, EGAB, GBA, GBAA-R, IHBA-R, IHBAA-R, and I think that's an I, IJNDB. So those seven policies are moving to withdraw them.
You need a second. Second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. And then there's one other policy that's in here, which is the policy EB. And I'm going to look at Esther to see if you can help me with this. But on, I know there's, there's a number of changes that were made from this. Oh, I remember now. It's just, well, no, I don't, I'm not sure that I do. It's really, it's, it doesn't, it's more a language change. Is that right, Esther?
Yeah, we did the, it used to be involved, if you look at the, if your title, it said emergency management. And we did all those EB and EBB policies last year. So that language has been taken out and now it's just workplace safety and the Joint Loss Management Committee, which by RSA says we have to have one. The SAU is now designing a process to have that committee and is working with the Department of Labor because the way the law reads, it says every district has to have their own and, or representatives. And so right now, the way that language reads, we'd have about 45 people on the committee. So Heather's working with the Department of Labor to see how, what we can configure given our SAU configuration, so.
So it's a similar type of thing where the emergency management part, we covered through other policies last year. And so now this becomes redundant because it covers both parts. So it's rewritten just to address the part that's not in another policy, which is the joint loss part.
Falling on ice or, you know, more facility, things like that, not related to safety so much, but more loss management.
Right, which is again, a legal requirement that we have that committee, and we do.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So is this just the first read-through or do we need to approve this tonight?
So this is one, I mean, it's, so as Esther and Heather were confirming or reaffirming that we don't have a, necessarily have a legal requirement to first and second read for, for policies. But I, I would see for this one in particular, that this is one that could just be approved the first time we're seeing it because it really is substantially similar to something that we've already had that's existing. It's just taking out some language that we've covered elsewhere. So it's more similar to what we just did with the withdrawal policy. It's not really a brand-new, from-scratch policy area that we need a lot of public input on. So I would move, I'll make a motion. I would move to approve the revised, well, I guess it's not even revised. Well, the revised policy EB that has a new name with Workplace Safety Program and Joint Loss Management Committee.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 That's it?
Aye.
Policy, oh, that's not it. There's one more thing. So policy committee is still meeting every month and both Heather and I have a conflict. It's that they meet at 6 o'clock on Thursday, a week from Thursday. Both Heather and I have a conflict next Thursday. I don't know if anyone else might be available to attend. If not, we can be kept informed about what the discussion is.
What, so on the 19th, Thursday, what time?
It's at 6.
6.
6 to 7, 6 to 7:30 at, at the latest.
AM?
PM, 6:30.
Sorry, PM.
And she can send Zoom link if you.
It's also something that you can choose to either meet in person or via Zoom.
Okay, I do have another meeting that night. I don't know.
I also, I'm also.
You're both up.
Sorry.
It's okay.
If anything changes.
I think it's okay just because Heather normally comes to our meetings and if we know she can come to that meeting and get some questions and she gives that brief.
Well, I can make a point of touching base with Heather after too. So we've, I mean, we've actually been pretty good, but I think particularly because we've had two reps that we rarely miss a meeting, you know, being represented from Exeter. But it typically happens that one or more districts can't attend a meeting for whatever reason. That's why we have this joint, you know, representation. So that those views usually get fleshed out anyhow, so that's fine. Sounds like it's just, for whatever reason, this, this is a strange night where we may not be able to attend. Heather, sorry. Okay, that's all for policy, thanks.
I. Oh, yeah. Super, that's fun. Superintendent Evaluation, our next meeting is this coming Thursday. And it's just an ongoing meeting. We meet on Zoom, check in as a committee and, you know, any updates from Esther. But we're regular every, every month. So that's coming up this week and I will be there. Wellness Committee. So that was, that was canceled. That meeting was canceled. Who runs that? Jean Pierce. Jean Pierce, thank you. Okay. Cancel that the last minute. Okay.
The next school safety meeting will be Thursday, the 19th, at the high school. At 9:00 to 10:30.
Yeah, and that's the first one of the year.
Correct.
And Communications and Community Engagement, Susan and Heather.
The next meeting will be the 24th of October. And that's a follow-up on, they have a survey presented and they've been giving feedback to Baltics Rep Nick. And he will be joining us via Zoom on that meeting to finalize that survey. And then I believe they're going to brainstorm how to advertise and engage people to fill that out.
It was wonderful having him there present. I mean, he was able to answer questions that we all had and made some adjustments right then and there. He did a great job.
So he'll be back.
Great. Okay, moving on to new business, the Will Wright Trust Proposals. So you have to, I'm not exactly sure how we handle these.
So you, you have those in your pocket as requested. And there's a labyrinth maze.
Yep.
And that information there. There's a collection of the Listening Library. And the saltwater tank. The Spot Vision Screener request. Community garden through Lincoln Street's greenhouse.
That was it.
Looks like there are five.
Five of them, yeah.
Five of them. And I don't know whoever's on that committee.
It's not a board committee anywhere.
Yeah.
I mean.
I am, yes, I am. No, we haven't. I just saw them. I mean, I saw them when this came.
Before we say too much, I'm, whatever our board wants to do tonight. But traditionally, what we've done is we've had these discussions in non-public because there's a concern about different people have put their proposals forward and if we're, you know, saying something that could be critical, is that disparaging of them in one form or another. So we've had a non-public discussion first and then we've made a decision and announced that publicly.
And notify typically.
Could, just for those who are listening, for transparency, could we just talk through what our process is for discussing? Like, I mean, I don't, I actually missed the meeting last year where you all discussed them. But what is the typical, we just review them through the application criteria and?
First on the committee and give an update about that.
Yeah. At the end of last, last meeting, we said that we're going to have part of this discussion in public.
That's why they were in your packet redacted. Because there was, I thought, my understanding was you wanted to have that conversation in public for transparency. So we redacted all the names so you could just talk, speak to the project. I think that's what I remember.
And we were going to ask the opinion of. Right. The administrators, I'm sure you've had a chance to review these. Are there any that float to the top for you or that you find more compelling? That would be a good fit for our elementary communities?
Well, you didn't talk about them because we weren't asked to really rate them or have a conversation about them.
We're just available to answer questions. People have questions, that's our process. We went on our, our previous process for last year.
They're all good. I mean, they're all good ideas. Most of them are Lincoln Street ideas. Staff members want to do it Lincoln Street. The only one that I was a little surprised about is the Listening Library from Main Street, but then the Vision.
I have a question about that, Deanna. Is that, I know the Lions Club you said did it this year. Is this replacing materials that the Lions Club?
I don't know if they're going to replace the Lions Club.
Almost $10,000, I know.
I don't know because the Lions Club also provides the glasses, correct?
Yeah, they support the marketing on this with glasses.
Oh, they provide the glasses?
If they need it. If they need it. So I'm not, I didn't ask any questions from the school nurses about this. I can go back, we can ask our nurses about their. We just purely took the information.
From them.
And passed it all.
Just for those who might be listening and have no idea what the Will Wright Trust is, could, could we just briefly just give like a quick, like overview of what it is and what the process was for people to apply, just so that we're, that would be helpful.
Are you looking at the, she's looking at the panel that we gave to everybody? Well, I can just tell you our process and then we can talk about the history of it.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, I think.
If it comes from like the real paper because I don't want to make a mistake. So our process this year, well, this is, I'm very short, apparently. Our process this year was the same it's been for the past three years we've done this, I believe? Three, four years, three years? Is that we notify staff in both schools and EDP, all three schools, that there is Will Wright Trust money that we, they can apply for if they have a proposal to benefit our schools and have a legacy within our schools and reach as many students as they can. So we, we put that out in May. And then the deadline for it was September 25th or something to that effect so that we could get the proposals to the board because ultimately you guys have the deciding vote about what you think. Maybe you want all of them to move forward, maybe you only want one of them to move forward. And so that the people who did apply and whose proposals are, are accepted can get started on them. So in the past, we've done the lending libraries that are outside all three schools. EDP has one, I believe. The Ukulele's that are right over there. So there's been some really great things that staff have come up with to make our school and make our community a lot better. And our, our kids have all benefited from it. Do you want to talk about the Will Wright? I don't, it was originally $150,000 that we have. I'm not sure how many, much money we have now.
Yeah, I was curious. So it was named after a gentleman, Donald Chase, who was born at the end of the 19th century, had very little money growing up. He graduated, went on to Harvard College. And he partially retired in 1950, moved to Exeter, became involved in town life and civic life. He, um.
I can help.
At the time, SAU 16 did not exist.
Yeah, it was, it was originally for high school students. That's how it was started. And then when we, as we grew, I want to say five years ago, it took about, I want to say, Patrick, what, two years for all the paperwork to be done legally to divide the trust between, in some fashion and proportion made up by a formula and agreed upon to the elementary school and to the high school. The high school is used for scholarships.
Since they, if they ever dissolved the trust, it was, it was to benefit the Exeter community.
Right. That's how they divided it between the two Exeter communities. Originally, there was only one.
Right, that's right.
And so that's where origin, the original committee here decided to look at legacy, how many students would be impacted as far as looking at which projects would be moved forward.
And Esther, do you know how much is still on the fund?
I just texted Molly. She's trying to find this statement.
Probably, it's pretty high though. I was going to say, it's pretty close to that.
I know it's over 100.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's pretty close to 150 and stuff.
Just from a process standpoint, this presentation and the information and the timeline you guys are holding to has been a lot better so far this year, so we appreciate that. I'm sure it makes your life a little easier too. I, I mean, I love all of it. I would have to really take a deeper look personally to maybe discuss this. I don't know if we do want to go into non-public to talk about it a little bit more. I'd like some assurances that any suggestions for the playground space isn't going to interrupt what we're currently have going on there. And if it is, then that's just one or two we, we wouldn't be able to consider.
And maybe just making sure accessibility, since that's something we want to make sure we're always doing.
Well, that's a, that's a related question that I had because that's not built into the budget right now. Do we know what the proposed budget with this, what the budgeting cost would be if it had a similar surface to what's going to be put on the playground instead of just wood chips? Which, because the pictures that I saw seem to be more wood chips.
I think that might be a picture of the one across the church.
That's just the one at Christ Church, just to give an idea of what.
Right, but I didn't, I didn't assume, were they budgeting for that similar sort of surface?
They said cobblestone.
Yeah.
Cobblestone, right.
I think is going to be.
But are they budgeting for rubber, rubberized surface so it's wheelchair accessible?
The whole idea of it is that it's going to be, they just walk in the labyrinth. I don't think it was going to be rubberized. At the time, I think this proposal was given, there was, like, I don't, we weren't even.
I understand, but now that we have that.
I can check back. I can always check back with the person and find out what they're thinking.
That's fine, I just as a.
Or are there state regulations now that we have to comply with?
Yeah, yes, there is a law in legislature right now.
I thought so.
Not a law yet, but what's going to come for the legislature is any playground additions or remodels have to be accessible.
Yeah.
Right, so I think that's just a consideration, just in terms of.
It hasn't passed.
Of really getting a realistic idea of what the cost might be if that's, has to be built in for additional materials.
That being said, I don't anticipate the labyrinth would be within the Will Wright. That being said, I don't anticipate the labyrinth would be within the Wheelwright budget, based on what the playgrounds cost for that kind of surface, if you wanted the similar surface.
I, I had another question, just, I guess, I'm looking at the saltwater tank. A question around, maybe it's past discussions around proposals that require upkeep. So that, that would be, I think, one of my concerns for that is just sort of the, there's a lot of upkeep to a saltwater tank and I'm thinking about legacy and sort of who, over time, is committed to that project.
Right outside here, right in this hallway.
Yeah.
And the person who is giving a fat proposal would need to have somebody as backup. I agree.
Well, backup, but that's...
Holidays, summer, yeah.
But if they leave, I mean, who, is it just, yeah?
That's the same, it's the same issue with the community garden, and I see that often. I mean, we see it at Brentwood right now. Their community garden is nothing. It's overgrown and because the person that, you know, had the passion for it left or retired or moved on, and then, so nobody wants to pick it up because it is extra work, you know, whether it's to maintain the tank or the garden or the labyrinth for that matter. So those are great questions.
Do we have that, that sort of model elsewhere in the SAU? Is there a fish tank in the SAU?
There was at CMS. It was a donation to CMS.
Yeah.
It's, I don't believe it's there anymore.
It's not.
Was that, how was that, how was that maintained?
It was maintained by a staff member.
Okay, yeah.
I think I remember the proposal for the greenhouse last year as well. I'm still, I'm actually impressed by the number, because I think last year we anticipated it being a lot more expensive, and there is a little bit of maintenance involved with that, but I've let my garden overgrow throughout the summer or in the off months, and you can always bring it back. I, I think that's a great, it's an indoor/outdoor opportunity. It's useful skills, it's collaborating, and I don't think that the price is completely outlandish.
It's a little different than last year with the new sugar shack.
Okay.
This is a greenhouse.
Oh, a sugar shack.
And it's in a different lo...
A bigger sugar shack.
Yep, yep.
And in a different location.
Right.
It was a greenhouse one year.
This one, I think, would go right outside our library, so all the students in the library could see it as well.
Again, I would just point out that we're depending on students and families to keep it over the summer.
Or we just have to go follow.
Come and do the garden, because there's summer schools here.
They do the, the boxes that were...
Yep.
They looked great all summer. I don't know who did that, yeah. I would walk by, yeah. So, yeah.
One, before we go, I don't know if we're still gonna go into non-public or not, but I guess one recommendation, I also really like the greenhouse, but I think one recommendation, maybe going forward with the application, is if there are certain things like maintenance of a project that we're just upfront in the application, that those are sometimes problematic if there's not a plan or something.
No, I just have it, it could be a, that's a good point. It could be a standard question. And it's something like, well, they're books, they'll just, they'll live in the library, or they're fish, they need to be fed, you know? I mean, those are, those are two, those are two different things, so, you know, or it's something that's installed and it will just be there, it won't need to be maintained, or it's outdoors and it'll have to be weeded and, and, you know, we'll coordinate with buildings and grounds or whatever, or we'll do it with community volunteers. That's a really good point.
You don't ask that?
I know we don't.
So we literally add that.
No, that's what I'm suggesting.
That's what Heather suggested. I think it's a really good suggestion for the future to incorporate that.
You might not even be thinking about that, right?
Yeah.
No, they're just thinking about it. This is gonna be so great.
Yeah, it's a good, I guess the other question I have to that is, like, how do, like, if a fish tank were to live in the school or, like, how, how, how were these proposals or, I guess, hindsight's 2020, like, checked with building leadership, right? Or safe, like, what, like, as I said, hindsight's 2020, going forward, that there might be some checklist of, okay, you have your proposal, we wanna check it by building leadership, we wanna look at accessibility, we wanna look at safety, you know, so that there's just that those things, you've had those, we've had those, the individual or group of individuals have had those meetings first, before we see the proposal, just so that this isn't a surprise to anyone, or we approve something that really actually causes sort of unforeseen impact on individuals.
So we have fish, a lot of fish tanks already in our school.
In classrooms.
Many, many, many. I will tell you, I don't know about Main Street, Beth can answer that better, but people do come to me and they ask me, what do you think of this? Do you think this is a worthwhile? Because they don't wanna do all the paperwork, like, if we're gonna sort of be like, eh, not a good idea, but we have actually pulled Esther in to sort of say, can you go tell them that it's probably not a good idea?
But I think if you just had, like, I'm getting, we haven't even talked about these, so I wanna give us, you know, the chance to do that, but I'm just thinking it's also a great way to, like, reinforce some of the things, the goals that we have around accessibility and whatnot, if they're in the application, to have people really think about them and have them visible as criteria or priorities. So, anyway, hindsight's 2020, but I, I think we learn a lot from...
Every year, the process gets more streamlined and we tweak it and it gets easier.
Have any of you had any experience with the Hill-Rom spot vision screening?
So, so right now, the Lions Club comes into our schools with their machine and they do our vision screenings for all of our kids.
More than once a year?
Mostly once, sometimes it'll come for a second round if we have a number of kids that missed it the first round, but they bring their machine in to create the spot checks for vision.
For free?
Yeah.
Is that something that's needed at the school level? And, Bunnin, does it get enough use? Or is it one, would be sort of the, the sort of thing you'd wanna have one for the entire SAU, or?
Well, we screen all of our students.
The Lions catch.
Yep.
No, I understand, but do, there's never been a request, I'm not aware that there's been a request in the past, for example, to buy one from, you know, that you've thought that there was a need to buy one?
And we, I think that it's about 20% rate where it's recommended that 20% of our students go on to do some kind of a more in-depth screening, because the spot screening picked up something that...
But a second spot test wouldn't uncover that either, they'd have to go to something more specialized.
Yeah.
And then I also wondered if you had any experience with the Vox books, the Vox audiobooks?
So we, we have some of those in our library right now, and the books themselves are about $50 apiece. And so your traditional, like, Listening Libraries, where you have the headsets and you plug in, plug them in, these are the actual books. And so students can have more choice in choosing what books they wanna listen to. They're really popular, they love them. They're actual books that you just plug right into.
Beth, it says that they can be used primarily in the library, but in classrooms can have them for a Listening Center, or on special occasions, they could go home with a student. So there's lots of options for use, for sure.
I think we have 10 to 12 of them right now in our library, and she's looking to expand that, so it can...
Selection, yeah.
On different interests with different books and things like that. So it would increase accessibility for students that might not be able to read the book? Yep. Yep. Nonfiction, fiction, interests for different students, reading levels, picture books, more text, just depends.
Okay. We should just take this as a non-public talk, you know, talk more freely.
It's not really a non-public matter, gotta, because we don't know, it's, it's not really, what Patty's asking me is about going into non-public, but if you look at the rules for non-public, it's not really a non-public matter, because there's no names attached to the...
I have a question regarding one of the, one of the requests, and that is, we talked just a little bit, Beth, about the spot vision screener. If this is a service that a local community organization does for us for free, and they do it for all the schools, I'm, I guess I'm just curious why we, why, what the benefit would be for us having our own? Is it, is it hard to book the Lions Club? Or is their equipment antiquated or?
I think it's, I, my guess is that it's just more accessible if we housed it ourselves and used it amongst our preschools. And like, if a student moved in, I think, I'm guessing this is what they're thinking.
To have an option there.
Can I ask a...
We can find out, we can find out for you.
Can I ask a process question? I mean, I'm assuming we might just go through each one in a minute, but, for example, the community garden, if a concern, like, I think it's a strong proposal in terms of tying it into a lot of needs, a lot of student learning partnerships, but we have this concern around maintenance, but I guess I also have this question around just checking in with you, Ryan, and who else needs to be consulted around the build of this? And so I wonder, from a process perspective, like, could some of these be sort of, do we have to vote yes or no on all of these, or could some of them be like, we need to find out more information and we bring it back to next month's?
We've done that before.
Okay.
That you want more information, bring it back.
Okay. Great.
I'd also like to know, when, are you done?
Yeah.
On the community garden, can we partner with our vocational school to help with that build? Would that help in our cost? Would it be a joint opportunity?
She's getting them.
Oh, can you send them to us? Or, okay, because we, I won't remember all the questions asked.
Can we partner with our voc school to help build this?
It depends, because partnering with voc sometimes first is availability, then it's liability.
Okay.
Is, there's a lot of factors with partnering. It's certainly worth asking, but it has to be a project that meets also their needs for learning. So it may not be something that jives. We've tried to do, I know we tried to do a shed before and it didn't.
It was a couple of years a teacher wanted a greenhouse but was not unwilling to get the pricing.
Well, I'm assuming too, like, looking at the greenhouse, these are approximate costs, so if, if we were to revisit this one, it might be helpful to see an actual, to see some actual estimates.
I'd also be interested to know what the ongoing challenges would be with this or what the ongoing, the plan is to maintain it.
Yeah.
I do love that it engages so many different students in, in the school, and then it helps the community with the, I think there's, I think it has a great purpose.
So would it make sense to just start one by one and either say, hold in for more information or take a vote? Would that make sense?
Well, I think we need to talk through all of them before we vote, though.
I think that's what she suggested.
Oh, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Are you gonna vote one at a time?
Nope.
No, go through all of them and then vote? Oh, yeah, I think it makes sense.
We'll start with the Zen labyrinth maze. I think personally it's a great idea, but I think once we cost the materials to make it accessible to all of our students, like our, the overhaul that's happening with our playgrounds now, I think this will be priced a little bit out of the, our general contribution annually.
So would you like them to get the cost to make it ADA and bring it back?
Sure.
May as well, just so you know.
I would like to...
And I think it's also something that, I mean, I think with any of these things, that maybe something that the board considers in, you know, end of year funds or some other way of funding it, if it doesn't go through the Wheelwright Trust.
Yeah, I'd like to asterisk that one for that also.
I would also say, since we've been talking so much about the playgrounds and developing sort of, I mean, I know we can only do them piece by piece, but sort of, we, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about sort of developing a vision for what they might look like, you know, what that would take. Personally, I feel like I would rather you all take this back and think about sort of, would this be, is this something that would fit into that future vision? How, because we've spent so much time talking about sort of wanting to really focus on the playgrounds and think about what the next steps might be at both schools, I think it's an interesting and, and, you know, beautiful proposal, but I, I feel like it, I feel like it would need, it needs to be integrated into that bigger conversation around the playgrounds.
Moving on to the Listening Library, collection of Vox books. I personally think this could be an and to whatever else we might decide. It's not a big budget item, it's wholly used by the entire student body. All right, is it just Main Street?
Yes.
Yes, it's just Main Street. I don't see a lot of challenges with that, or I don't have a lot of questions about that.
I just, I guess, since my own thinking about it, I, I just don't understand why this would be a Wheelwright piece. I mean, it's already, sounds like it's coming in through the budget, and if we need to increase the budget, so we provide more money for that, also sounds like something that the PTO would fund, because they're looking for things to fund. I mean, it's, it, it's just not a, I guess to me, it's not a big sort of wow factor additional project that adds a legacy. I mean, it seems like something we should be doing, and they are, and they are doing. And if we need to do it, I guess, for one year, but, you know, we could do that, but I, I don't think we should be putting $2,000 every year through the Wheelwright Trust Fund towards the books. I mean, we should just build it into the budget, if they need additional money for that.
If we went ahead and, and accepted this proposal and then made that recommendation to the person requesting this, to the Wheelwright, that, and then we as a board and as Main Street School kind of added it to the budget process for the next years. I don't think it's intended to be an annual request. I don't, do you know, Beth, from the...
It's a, it's a one-time ask for that amount of money. They do have an 18-month warranty themselves, so.
Okay, the saltwater tank. I love the concept. I see a challenge keeping live animals alive all year round when there's vacations and summers to contend with, so that would be, what is that plan to handle the maintenance of something like that? And it's an ongoing cost. It's not just gonna be this one time. Fish are gonna die. It is beautiful, and everyone would see it as they walked by to the cafeteria, but I know the one that was gifted to CMS was gifted from a friend of mine, and I saw the amount of work that goes into a fresh, a saltwater tank. It's a lot of work. They're beautiful, they're beautiful. And, and I'm not sure how long it lasted at CMS before, it just, it was just too much. I don't know.
I, I agree. I think it, it would be very hard to maintain this.
That's my only reservation. I think it's a great idea. I think that is, that does have a wow factor, and that does, is something that would be unique, but it's just, there's not a plan for maintaining it. And I, I know we didn't ask for one, but without a plan, I think it's hard to prove that, because the, the fish will just die out. It's not like it, they just fade or something, like a mural that's not maintained. I mean, literally, it will, the fish will die after a while if they're not maintained properly.
They need certain heat lamps and lighting.
Yeah.
And saltwater needs to be, there's a big upkeep with it. They are amazing.
And during vacations and during other times, and I don't think we can just say that buildings and the physical plant will just do that.
A lot of offices that have them in their guests, in their waiting rooms, they have companies that come in and take care of that on a regular basis, so.
Maybe that should've been part of the proposal, what that, what costs for a company to come in. I don't know.
I don't know if we wanna request additional information, or do we...
I think we can ask for additional information on what a maintenance plan would be.
Okay.
Just on how it would be maintained, but at this point, it's hard without that plan, it's hard to...
Okay. The Hill-Rom spot, spot vision screening request. I love to have all the stuff in-house if we possibly could, but I don't really see a need for this, because we get this service for free, and secondary tests don't really matter, because you'd need something more specialized, as we discussed, if you didn't pass, or this particular, the spot vision screener picked up something. pass, or this particular, the spot vision screener picked up something. So I don't know what the ongoing usage would benefit us, really in the big picture.
Do you want me to ask, just in case, like their vision is?
Yeah.
No pun intended.
Like, why do we leave?
Their vision is different than what we're assuming.
I did, you know, I felt the same way, but when Abby mentioned that having it in-house makes it accessible when we have families move into our schools, we have it there so that they, in fact, can also be screened. I remember when they would come in, it was sometimes twice, but no more than twice when I was teaching. I'm not sure if that's changed. But it would reach everybody if we had it, it would be accessible for everyone, so that is just another thought.
So, yeah, I guess why they think having it here works.
Yeah.
And then, is this the last one? The community garden. I definitely am into this whole idea, but we do need more information about ongoing maintenance and what that's going to look out, look like throughout the summer.
I would just also just again say that I think it's ongoing maintenance, and I guess just checking in with like building and leadership around just how will this be built? And, you know, I mean, there's construction involved, there's maintenance, like, I feel, I don't know if you've had those conversations with the individual that proposed this yet, but just to make sure that everybody's on the same page before it's, I don't know what approvals would.
Can we talk with the person about the site and where it would go?
Okay.
It's changed a few times. We proposed a different site, and the person was like, that's a better site?
Okay.
Yes, so the site has been discussed, but that's for a lot of reasons. A, it's closer to the building with water, so water's accessible.
Another, another big factor is just we needed it to be in a spot that would have good camera view. Had a lot of issues this year, particularly just unsupervised free time, and it's been problematic, so I expect that would be a consideration, just the long-term safety of investment like that, too.
If, well, I guess that's my, again, I have all these thoughts on the application, but it feels to me that you all would have to sign off on this and say that this is something that we can do within the building, and it meets the safety requirements, and it meets the.
Do you have to be involved?
You know, some of the things that you're just named in terms of.
Oh, you're very against this one.
We did speak to Rusty about her rest fee.
Yeah.
And on it.
I guess going forward, that would be super helpful when looking at these, right? That you all, not from like, I approve this, but if, if the board were to approve it, we can do it, so to speak.
We can ask you about it.
Yeah. But that's good to know.
So.
Like building things, because we don't know prices, and we don't, like, is this reasonable?
Right.
Yeah, but I really, I like this, I thought this was very thoughtful. I think just getting some estimates on what the real costs, the real costs might be, and a plan for maintenance would be helpful.
So I'm, to throw my two cents, this is one actually I would, I would approve tonight, personally, because I, I don't think it's, it's not the same as fish. If a few plants die, then, you know, whatever, you, we dig up the dirt and you do it again differently the following year. So, and I don't think that's unlike the labyrinth, it doesn't feel like it's going to be, really take over an area that's going to be destructive. If it doesn't work, it's just sort of disassembled and, you know, it doesn't stay there. But I think it's, I mean, I think it's really promising, and I think there's a lot of ways it could be integrated into the curriculum, plus sort of like the Maple Sugar Shack, but it's not dangerous like that, you know, where, you know, dealing with heat and other sorts of things, where you'd have to have that level of supervision. I, I don't know. I, I think this is one that I personally would approve tonight. I don't disagree about that they should come up with a plan and how it's going to be maintained, but I don't think there's a lot of risk to it as much, in the same way.
I think it's great. So you envision this a structure that is put up during the warm months and it comes down in the winter months?
Oh, I don't know. I'm not, I didn't envision it that way. It's what I meant is that unlike the labyrinth, you'd have to really kind of redig up the whole site if you decided that for whatever reason you didn't want to use it, or we didn't want it there, we want it over here. You'd have to start all over again with a pretty significant financial investment, whereas this is a more modest investment for something that a lot of people can participate in. It sounds like it's been vetted by the, you know, by the building folks, you know, in terms of figuring out the best spot, so I don't know.
They did mention in, about the legacy, and so whoever the staff member is that proposed this has already thought through the summer months about having families and students engage and participating, weeding and watering, and following through that whole process till harvest, harvesting happens, so.
I also just love, I love the whole part about the community connection, too.
I agree.
You know, talking about giving back to the community, teaching that at a young age is also a really powerful message.
I agree.
There's still a lot that's in here beyond.
Can I ask, I mean, obviously, it's, if we have 150 in the, in the fund, 7,000, you know, if, if the, if, when they get the actual estimates, if it goes over that amount, they would have to come back to the, to the board to approve?
We've never.
Has that ever happened?
Well, Wheelwright Trust.
Yeah.
It's always just been like instruments or equal, like, I don't.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm, I'm, I think we're feeling, I'm feeling like we were in support of this. I guess I'm thinking just from a process perspective, is it helpful to get the actual estimates? Is it helpful to you all to see who would be doing the work and how it's, kind of go over the plans? Okay, rather than having to go back and forth.
And I think it would be less disappointing for the person who came up with it if we said yes now, and then we'd have to say no later.
Right, right. Or just wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, just keep going back and forth.
I'm wondering if material costs, they wrote approximate, because who knows when the ti, when this is built in the spring, what the actual cost would be, so it'd be hard to project ahead. So I think they're making an estimate at given, the given cost for now. So I'm not sure how.
We never even, I don't think we ask, right, for them to go get bids or anything yet.
No.
Yeah.
No.
It's a, I think that, like, we've never been in this position before, so if we go back and say like, we're, the board is interested in pursuing this, but they need more accurate estimation, I think the person would be like, oh, good, I'm doing it for something.
Right.
I'm just doing it, and I'm not asking people to come in, just to sort of let their hopes down, too. Like, we're not absorbing people's time, but I think that if the person knew that, like, this is a real consideration, I think it's a different, that's different.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
Great. Do we want to wait for some additional information and then bring this back up at our next meeting?
Yeah, do we want to now go through all of them and just, I'm not sure, or do we decide where we are at with each of them?
Yeah, all of them had questions.
Yeah, we all.
Yeah.
So I think I have to go back and get more information, because I wrote the questions on the bottom of each proposal that you had, so.
All right.
Can I just ask a clarification on the Vox, Vox, or book Vox books? Was that?
That's right, it was unclear.
Going back to the budget, correct? Looking at our budget.
We didn't make any decisions. There's just commentary about, it could, I mean, I commented it could go in the budget. I don't, we didn't make any decisions as a board what we wanted to do.
I mean, that was the one I was less clear about, is.
Yeah.
And that's also a good end of year fund request also, that.
I don't have a question on that one. Did you get a question on that one?
Just whether if, if they want us to put it in the operating budget or not.
Okay.
So if they didn't approve it, we would, we would probably put it in the operating budget.
Well, do we want to make a decision on that one tonight?
I.
I think we could. No, either way. I mean, I just, I don't know that I need more information necessarily. I think it just, are we going to approve it or wait to talk about it at the end of the year?
We're going to wait to see if they're going to put it in the operating budget, if it's something they can do instead of.
All right.
I think if you didn't approve it, we would put it in the operating budget.
Okay, right.
So if you're going to approve it, we would not put it in the operating budget.
Well, Patrick doesn't seem to think it fits sort of the model for Wheelwright, right? Like, it's not really a legacy gift that keeps on giving, right? The spirit of the Wheelwright Trust?
Yeah, I don't know. It's, there's different ways of looking at it. There's not only one way. I can, I could be convinced different ways. I just gave a reaction. But I also see that they have 15 books now, and they're adding additional 40, so would, it would be a substantial increase and really dramatically change the program quickly. And so I think that also, I could see how that would be sort of, wow, we have all these additional books all of a sudden.
I would like to approve it.
Yeah.
I would like to approve it.
I just think it's a great, and it's, it's not a huge investment. It's like, it's, it would grow it quickly. I think it's, it's in line with our values, and they're not asking for that much, and.
And, and it can be added to the budget for future years to keep building the library, so. That being said, I would like to approve, or vote to approve.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to vote to approve the Listening Library Collection for Main Street School for $2,000.
And I would like to second that.
The Wheelwright proposal for that.
Wheelwright proposal. Thank you.
For that fund, yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And I think the others are pending additional information, and we'll talk about that, I guess, at our next meeting.
One other, I'm sorry, just one quick clarification, just so everyone has this in their mind. We're not limited. We could spend all $150,000 this year if we wanted to. If we saw something that, that fit things, there's nothing about the mandate, or I don't think the committee, I'm not on the committee now, but I don't, I don't think the committee further defined that we're limited to no more than 25% of the funds or something like that. If we felt that there was enough things we wanted to do, we could fund all these, we could fund some of them, but we can't fund more than $150,000. That's the only caveat.
So Ryan and Deanna, how, how do you feel about, I know it was brought up, about the vision of the playground? Might be putting you on, on the spot, but the labyrinth fitting into that vision, long range of the space.
The person that put in for it already had a landscaper come and asked us about the space, and so when they're out there working, the space that the labyrinth would go is, right now, with this project, was not effective. Right now, it's sort of just, I think it was a bocce ball that nobody, the kids, nobody, we don't even have bocce balls or anything. So it would be dug up, so the landscaper that came and gave an idea of it, actually, I believe maintains the one on the church, by the church, is it by a church?
It's by, yeah, a church on Pine Street.
So that's, there were two locations that were discussed, and the one where the bocce ball court is right now, that was the one, because it's closer, under the trees a little bit, teachers can watch, and it's just, so a decision was made because where they're working on the playground isn't where that is right now.
Right. So if the, if we could install the same, we'd have to, the proposed, the person that proposed this would have to investigate install, the cost of installing the rubberized base for that. But I think it, it is an opportunity to offer something for students, faculty, and the community. So I do think it fits under the Wheelwright vision. It's just, I'm wondering what the cost would be.
And then also, when you guys were building your new playgrounds or requesting certain things, was this ever an option that you were like, boy, we'd like to have that?
I don't think it came up. Never talked about it.
Okay.
This is a pure proposal. This wasn't even anything that.
You had envisioned.
Yeah.
I guess that's another, just, I guess we've talked about it in previous meetings, but I'm, I'm not sure how this, I'm looking for suggestions, but we, we talk about, you know, the PTO, we have, we, we have the budget, we have the Wheelwright, then we have the plans that you all have in play, you know, that you're, so I just, what's feeling maybe, I don't know, a missed opportunity is like, how do we align some of these things, right? How, how, how do people who might be interested in applying for the Wheelwright in the process know, might, maybe know what other things might be in the pipeline that they could go talk to and say, hey, like, how could we collaborate? How do we get some of this information of things that come in for the Wheelwright that we don't choose to fund, maybe, to maybe the PTO? Or, you know, it just feels like there is an opportunity for some cross-communication around some of the requests that come in through this process, and it's hard, I think, I think this has been a good discussion, but I guess it's, it's hard to know, you know, when they come to us, sort of how, how are these fitting in with, you know, the plans that are already underway, for example, with the playground, or, so I guess it's just a question for the future of sort of how we might encourage some of that, or make some of, am I making any sense?
I think it makes, it makes sense. I think the thing, the thing I would, though, add to that, though, is that I think part of this whole thing about the Wheelwright, it's not supposed to be so red tape driven, that it has to be part of the formal budget process and this, that, that.
Right.
You just come, you have an idea, hey, what do you guys think about this? If you have, hopefully have realistic numbers, or you flush it out, but it's sort of fund money towards something that wouldn't happen otherwise. I mean, it's not, it really, it would get, we could spend $150,000 if it's just to support the budget in one year, and it would make a small dent. But we've also, in the past, one other thing I'd say is that in terms of that, whatever, connection between other funding sources, we've had, one year there was a ton of ideas that came out, and a lot of them were funded by the board at the end of the year.
Right.
So I think only one or two of, of those projects were approved formally, but a lot of it came in through the budgeting, that the board thought, these are good ideas, but let's tackle it later through the budgeting process, and funded most of them anyhow.
Well, I think that, that first year, there were like 24 proposals.
Right.
And the board was like, we didn't even know that you guys needed these things.
Right.
And so you were able to fund it with the end of year balance.
Everything from seating, you know, flexible seating, to all kinds of things that were suggested, so.
Yeah, I think that's so great, and I just wonder for this, right? Like, if, if we're, if we could find a way to make sort of our decision-making process more transport, we talked about some things that probably would be consistent going forward around maintenance, you know, just these are things that we want to see in the proposal. And then also, maybe even in, just if it's a smaller thing and it doesn't get approved, this is still a really useful tool for the board from a needs assessment perspective, or even maybe as school leadership, to know what folks need, I think, because I would hate someone to keep applying and then feel discouraged or not know, I mean, it was great to have this conversation in a public meeting.
I don't think we've had any repeat applications, have we? And that's, I don't think we've had repeat applications in the past, where someone's applied and then come back next year with the same application.
No, they've tweaked it based on feedback or based on, and I have to be honest with you, I don't think, Beth, and I, I know I don't, like, I don't typically say like, no, I'm not pushing it for four, like, if, obviously, if it was something that Ryan, like, we're not.
Yeah.
I mean, a major thing, but I don't feel like, I think, we don't feel like we can make a decision for you, you should be able to see everything.
Right.
So I don't, we don't flush anything out.
Right.
Unless it's like dangerous, or just like a ridiculous, like, we cannot do it.
So that's a clarifying question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
If we need to, but it's, you know, it's supposed to be, I think, that, that like high in the sky, I have this idea, this is the money, and you have to do it possibly.
I just want to keep on going back to when you were picking out your new playgrounds, and there were certain things and structures you could invest in. Was it like just a package deal, or could you have had extra things? Did you not get things that you wish you got, and this is going to take the space of it?
You can spend as much money as you want.
I would love a more accessible playground.
To add?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And have, are any of you familiar with the benefits of this maze? The, you know, the person who proposed this talks a lot about, quiets the mind, opens the heart, grounds the body, like, yeah, I think I'll, I'll use it. Okay, so it wasn't part of your initial vision for the whole scape? You're not against it, you won't be losing space that you want for other things if we did do it? Okay. Right, if it was on the ADA compliant material. Right, if it was on the ADA compliant material.
Sometimes those sort of things have been vetted by a building committee.
Right.
We've had with, with Rusty and Esther and a board member too and, and, you know, sometimes other administrators that we've sort of thought through those things, embedded them that way too.
Yeah. Yeah, I find it really help, it's a great process to get a sense of what people are dreaming of and it's helpful to to think about it in alignment with some of the other things we've been talking about too.
Okay, so I think we're waiting more information to continue this discussion next time around. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Patrick, do you want to approve the greenhouse?
I do, but I'll wait.
I know, I just want to wait for more information.
I think it's fine, we're getting more questions and we're going to bring it back up to discuss four out of the five proposals, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, what would you like for the next meeting? Like, do you want us to just tell you the answers? Do you want a prepared, like, I just want to make sure we're prepared.
Maybe just add on to the six session.
Yeah.
Isn't the committee have some board representatives?
Me.
Yes.
Susan.
Wouldn't, would it make sense for, when you get the information, to have a meeting outside of this meeting with your board representatives?
Sure.
So you know all the questions and then you guys can, kind of like policy, then you can present it to the rest of the board. And I recommend next year, we do that meeting with these guys before this meeting again.
Okay.
So then, when they have questions, we can already have those answered before we bring them to the full board.
Right.
Kind of like how we do policy.
Exactly.
And is it?
Doesn't mean, I mean, ultimately the board makes the decision, but the subcommittee can present it.
Right.
And help, help co-present it. That makes sense.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Is Susan and somebody, not Heather, oh. Do you want us to set something up?
Sure. You want to talk after this or you want to just get in touch tomorrow?
Whatever.
Just has to happen before the next board meeting.
I'm just writing, taking notes on my phone.
All right. I think Exeter Elementary Story Walk, we did, Policy Review, we did. Old Business, is there any old business anyone would like to bring up? We have no reason to go into public, non-public?
Yes, there is.
Oh, sorry. Under what?
93A, 3A.
I make a motion to go into non-public under RSA.
93A?
93A.
Colon?
Colon.
Colon 3.
3.
A.
A. And at this time, the public portion of this meeting is over. Thank you for attending and we will see you next time.
And we have non-public at 8:00, 9:00 PM. I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of Superintendent Office regarding the first bomb out. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.